Welcome everyone to the Special Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 24, 2025 of the Charter Township of Washington. If you'll all stand and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If our Clerk Audrey Brown will do the roll call.
Pravidi.
Present.
Nicely.
Here.
Chaplin.
Here.
Mylum.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Reinhold.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Okay, all present. You see before you the agenda. Because this is a Special Board of Trustees meeting, no changes can be made to the agenda. So I am making a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Supported by Stevenson. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Any comments from the audience on agenda items? If you do, you have three minutes. You can please come to the podium, state your name and address. Hearing none, going once, going twice. Okay, thank you very much. So today, the purpose of today's meeting is to review our 2024-25 audit presentation by Plant Moran. Normally, we try to do this at a regular meeting. We just ran out of time and that's why we're doing it today. It was convenient time between us and Plant Moran. So I'd like to introduce Pam Hell from Plant Moran. Plant Moran has handled our account, I want to say, for over 20 years. Not longer than. So you'll see the presentation up on the screen. Each trustee should have the detailed booklet here of the financial report and the letter. And I'll turn it over to Pam.
Great, well, good afternoon. Thanks for having me here. Appreciate the opportunity to go through the results of the audit for your March 31, 2025 fiscal year end. Did want to just talk a little bit about the audit process. I know we have a few new board members from the last time that we were here last year. So feel free to stop me. I love numbers, so I'm happy to answer questions about anything in the financial statement packet. We have prepared a presentation with just some high overview of the numbers because the financial statements are 70, 80-plus pages. So we don't plan to go through all of those pages. But if you do have specific questions, we're happy to go into those details and answer those questions as well. So the audit process really is an all-year-round type thing. So one of the things that helps our audit process is that your team does a great job as things come up during the year of reaching out and we're able to kind of work through those unique transactions or unique contracts and items as they come up throughout the year. So we really appreciate the collaboration that we receive from the township and your team and it helps during the audit process. So I did want to specifically make sure to thank Supervisor Pravidi, Clerk Brown, Treasurer Nicely, and Christine, and Pam, and the entire team. You know, as I look around the room, we bug almost all of you guys. So really, I should just want to say thank you to everybody. Like I said, it's a true team effort to make sure we get the audit out by the deadline, which is September 30. So with that, I will just focus briefly on the financial statements and the numbers. So if you'll see on the first slide up on the screen, this graph shows all of the revenues for all of your governmental funds. So it's basically all of the activity in the township other than your water and sewer fund. So we have a separate slide for that. So think general fund, police fund, fire fund, ALS, you know, your capital projects, all of those types of things. So you'll notice on the left is the property tax line that is your largest source of revenue, as is very common for many communities throughout the state of Michigan, with about 65% of your total revenues being from property taxes. You'll notice an increase this year, and the millage rate was not changed. It was due to the increase in the value of the parcels within the township. All of the other categories really remained relatively consistent over prior years. It's worth noting, to the right, the second column from the right, the investment income, as rates have increased in the last two years, there's been significant changes in the investment structure, taking advantage of those increased rates. And as you can see, provided significant additional revenue to the township as well, which obviously aids in the budget process for ensuring the stability of the township. And then the far right column, I did want to point out, you'll notice in 2024, the other income or miscellaneous income was a little bit higher than in prior years and is down a little bit over this year. And really, that decrease or that one-year increase, I guess if you want to look at it that way, was just due to a parking lot project that was done where the Parks and Recreation Authority paid for a portion of that project. And that was about $350,000, $400,000, something like that. So it was a one-time revenue source to offset a capital project, not a reoccurring income stream.
Pam, on the investment loss, can you explain? It was not a dollar loss, it was just a...
Oh yeah, so in 2022, I think we all know the market was not the greatest in 2022. Part of the township's investment strategy, which is in compliant with Public Act, is to invest in certain investments that fluctuate, the fair market value fluctuates. As long as you hold it to term, you will not have a loss. You will be able to take advantage of the income that's been earned and promised on those investments. So it really related to a point in time versus an actual cash loss, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, then on the next slide, so we looked at the revenues. Now, this is going to look at the expenses or the dollars that the township is spending. Again, looking at all the governmental funds, so all the activity minus water and sewer. You'll notice here, which again is typical for most communities, public safety is the largest expense at about 50% of total expenses. And really, the categories all remained relatively consistent. You'll see some slight increases due to, you know, contract negotiations and different promises that were made throughout those, but really fairly consistent in terms of nominal increases. And then on the far right, the second column from the right is your capital outlay. As you're aware, the township has put a significant investment in infrastructure over the last several years, which has been planned and budgeted, approved by the board. And you may recall, several years ago, there was capital improvement bonds that were taken out to fund some of these capital projects. And so that, along with other funds, were used to fund these various capital-related projects, such as road projects, ambulances, et cetera.
Lots of roads.
Yeah, lots of roads, yeah.
Could you, sorry, if you could go back one second. So like the Park and Rec, a lot of people don't understand that, that Parks and Rec is its own entity now, so we didn't take a decrease in revenue and expenses. It's its own entity.
Yeah.
Maybe you could explain it.
Sure, great, great point. And so in 2022, you'll see that expense on the books. And then you'll see that there hasn't been anything in the last couple of years. And that agreed with what Sam said. So there still is a Parks and Recreation Authority. Still are spending dollars. You still have a seat on the commission and you help with those budget decisions, et cetera, through those seats. But there was a change in the accounting standards as well as the structure of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which changed the way that it was recorded within your financial statements. So in the past, prior to 2023, you would have a gross-up of revenue and expense for the property tax millage for Parks and Recreation that you collected and then remitted out to them. So that's what that $1.2-ish million was, is the revenue you've collected from township residents and then remitted to Parks and Recreation. And that should fall off the slide next year, but definitely worth noting there is still a Parks and Recreation Commission and they are still operational and providing services to the residents.
No, because people are always asking, they think we've lost revenue and...
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason for the spike in the capital outlay in '24?
Just the timing of planned projects. And Sam, I don't know if you want to expand on that further.
Yeah, in '22, '23, we did a lot of roadwork here from Mound, the roundabout. We did a lot of, we paved 30-mile road. That was another big project. Camp Town, Mound, we did a lot of PPP work with the county. That's preservation of the current roads. And then we did here at the Township, Paul, the parking lot, which we brought a lot of infrastructure to the back so we can start building the pavilion and bathroom back there. But as we ripped open the parking lot, that was the perfect time to bring the infrastructure back. So the parking lot was a lot more than we ever thought it would be. That was another big, but mainly roadwork, all the cost-sharing projects we did. Paul Road is actually a little bit in it too, even though we gave some of the money back then, but yeah.
And a lot of that was bond proceeds that were taken out in 2019 or 2020. Needed to be spent within the five-year period. So there was, I think, a slight delay on some of the projects. And so a lot of those were kind of ramped up and actually got completed in 2020.
Yeah, so when I took office in '20, COVID was still here. A lot of, everything got put to a halt. And then there was a massive delay with logistics. So everything started coming '22, '23. So that's why you see this big burst in those two years. But, I mean, the residents were happy. We fixed a lot of roads in that time too. But it was just a lot of work all at once. Even though I'm still trying to get more roadwork, but a lot more needs to be done. West Road was another big one that obviously we had to...
That all kind of went into 2024?
West Road was the first one. I want to say that was in '22, '23, it was earlier.
When they do '27, my road, up to Hayes, or that section, front of the house, they did that asphalt there too.
Yeah, that was that PPP, I want to say that was '23 as well. '23 was a busy year.
Yep, see that.
And, sorry, we did use a little bit in DPW money to, no, but that was part of the bond. We brought some water lines to do a circulation down Inwood and down 28 Mile as well. But yeah, majority is roadwork, a lot of roadwork.
So do we expect that to spike again in the future? Or is it pretty much going to stay around that five, six million?
It depends because like I'm trying to get all the road projects ready. They call them like shovel-ready. So like Mound from, I was trying to get Mound from '26 to '32. They called me up one time and it was actually Good Friday that time. They're like, if you're ready, we'll do '26 to '28. I'm like, I'll take. I'm like, I'll take it. So that's why we got that portion, but they wouldn't do the next portion. We are scheduled for '27 to do mound from '29 to '32, but it's still a long way because I don't know if we can get through another winter with mound the way it is, but...
Be rough.
Yeah, it's rough out there.
I drive that every day.
But now I'm starting to get complaints on Mount Vernon area. I know John's staring at me.
Hey, town comes to...
Staring at you in the kindest way possible.
But, you know, obviously Van Dyke is the most-traveled road. Then you get mounds that probably the next traveled, and then Mount Vernon's probably, you know, the stepchild on the side. But they're all, they're all important, obviously. But there's a portion of 27-mile under the overpass there that really needs a, that's another bad spot. And then, and I'm, then we got to deal with M-53. So I'm working with M-DOT to try to get that intersection, 30 and M-53 is a bad...
Are those likely to give us another spike like we had in '24 then? Or are we pretty much staying in the $5, $6 million?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to get at least one major road project a year. We were kind of playing catch-up, we did about four roads a year for those couple of years. So it should go down or stay kind of plateau now going forward. I mean, the offset is we either have a healthy bank account and lousy roads, or we have nice roads and a steady flow. We kind of got to find the happy medium between the two.
And I think that's actually a perfect lead-in to the next slide, Pam. So this actually shows the trend, so the blue line up on top is the fund balance or the savings account, whatever you'd want to refer to. And again, this is for all funds. But you can see that it has slowly declined over the last four years, mainly due to the bond proceeds that, they come in as revenue when you receive them. And then as you spend them, that is when the expense occurs. So, you know, a spike in revenue when you get that, and then slowly that fund balance is being used. And, you know, I think to Sam's point, it's planned, budgeted projects. And then what are the implications on the fund balance or the savings account as you use savings to pay for some of those capital projects? So those will continue to be ongoing discussions through your long-term capital planning, budgeting, as you work through that to see the effect on fund balance. So I, you know, I think overall, and this shows all the governmental funds. Actually, maybe if we can go to the next slide, this might be a better...
Pam, just real quick, that's going to spike again because of this new bond that we had too, so we'll see it next year.
Yeah, so the revenues will go up again, yep, with the bond issuance.
With this new bond, you're going to kind of see a reset again? And that'll kind of do the same thing again over the next five to 10 years?
Yeah, so, and that's why this slide's, if you go to the next slide, it's actually a little bit, tells a little bit of a better story, because this is the fund balance and what's made up of the fund balance. And when you have bond proceeds, they show up in that restriction line. So you can see that back in, you know, '21, the restricted amount was much higher. And then as you spend those bond proceeds, that restriction amount is decreased, you know, down to the $13 million. So left in there would be things where you have assigned and dedicated millages, such as police, fire, ALS, et cetera. So those can't be spent on roads or anything like that. They have to be spent on the specific purpose for which they were levied, albeit, you know, public safety, et cetera. And then, so what we typically would like to look at is that unassigned bucket down at the bottom, the $2.9 million, that's really kind of the amount that's available for a cash flow perspective. And it, that's mainly all in the general fund, the $2.9 million. And oftentimes, when we're looking at kind of the health of the general fund fund balance and what does that look like, one of the metrics that is commonly used is the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures within the fund. So compared to the general fund, the unassigned balance of $2.9 million, expenses in the general fund were about $5.3 million this year or so. So that's about 55% of general fund expenses. So steady, stable fund balance from an operational perspective. In the general fund, just specifically speaking on general fund, which is, you know, all of your other operations other than public safety and water and sewer, you did have an increase in fund balance prior to transferring out to fund capital projects. So the board had approved a transfer of about $3 million this year over to fund capital projects. Before that transfer, your, just your regular revenues minus your operating expenses, et cetera, actually added to fund balance about $400,000. So just kind of keeping that in mind as you head into the budget process and you think about long-term, what your capital needs are. You know, obviously, you don't want to be using fund balance to fund operations, but, you know, funding one-time type things is often something that we see. And then just watching that metric, just to make sure it doesn't dip down too low. The township's always done a great job of monitoring that, making sure that you're fiscally healthy. And I know that was, came in very handy back in '08, '09, when the, you know, the property tax revenues dropped drastically. So just continue to keep that in mind as you head into budgeting in looking at your long-term forecast as that kind of available amount or unassigned amount has gone down, you know, over the last several years. And then lastly, just quick on the water and sewer fund. So you'll see kind of that left bar, the tealish-green color is your operating revenue. The orange is your operating expenses. So ideally, you'd want to see those about breaking even or, you know, coming a little bit where your operating revenues over your expenses. If your expenses are over your revenue, that means that the current users of the system are not covering the current costs of running the system. And so it's been really close to break-even, you know, as you can see up there the last several years. With the last two years, the revenue being less than the expenses. So it's just something to continue to watch as you consider rates for the system. And one of the things that's kind of not unusual, but just unique to the water and sewer fund is when you have repairs or infrastructure, it costs a lot of money, right? So ensuring that from a fund perspective, you're able to keep that fund financially where it needs to be to fund the future growth and some of the things that Sam talked about, and to provide the right level of service to the current residents as well.
So just for the board to reiterate, traditionally, the water and sewer fund has a pretty large fund balance. But we do have a lot of big-ticket items that do need repair. So we'll be seeing that as the year goes on. We're supposed to get that study back from Fishback hopefully in the next month or two, so.
All right, and then I think that was it for the numbers. I did want to cover the end-of-audit letter as well. But if, does anyone have any questions on anything that I have already covered? So then, the other, the one other deliverable I wanted to talk about, there should be a letter in your packet. It's eight pages, maybe stapled, you know, not very big. For those of you that are new to the board, this, you'll be a part of this process in the upcoming audit. But before the audit starts, we do communicate with the three full-time elected officials. We talk about our plan for the audit, we talk about risks, et cetera, as we head into the audit. But we do provide the entire board with a letter that outlines what our plan is for the audit, also giving you the opportunity to reach out if you have questions or if you have, you know, concerns or other things that you want to make sure we address during the financial statement audit. And so Section 2 within this letter does kind of cover the follow-up and the results of that initial communication that we sent out, you know, before the audit starts. So I will get into that. I do want to briefly touch on Section 1, which would be any items we noted related to internal controls. So we did have a couple of items in here this year. The first one being a repeat item from last year that actually was corrected during the fiscal year. It's just that it was still in effect from April through early November. So we did have to note it as a risk. And that was, some of the user settings within the payroll system didn't limit the individual who was responsible for reviewing the payroll from changing payroll settings. Now, we did do testing, and we did not note any improprieties. But just having that ability is always a risk. And so when we brought it to attention last year, you know, Audrey and her team made that change in November of 2024. So I would anticipate that this finding would be gone in the 2026 audit. And then the next one would just be related to some audit adjustments that were identified during the audit process, you know, related to various items. I'm not going to go through, this is a really long paragraph. So I'm not going to go through all the details, but there were some audit adjustments. And we know there's been a lot of turnover within the team during last fiscal year. And so it's really hard to close books on numbers where you really weren't here for a lot of the year. So hoping that through this coming year, your team is, I know, working diligently to set additional processes and procedures in place, and hoping that a lot of those will also go away for the 2026 audit. And then lastly, seems to be somewhat of a common theme here is that there was some, you know, some turnover within the accounting department. As a result of that, some of the timeliness of the bank reconciliations, you know, the timeliness piece did not occur. So all of the bank recs for the year were all prepared, they just were not all done timely. And so an important part of the internal controls is a timely reconciliation of your bank and investment reconciliations throughout the year. So we know the township is aware of this, they have been working on this. I would say one thing that we would like to point out, just in terms of actual cash and investment activity, the Treasurers Department does have strong controls around physical access to cash, online banking. So we've worked a lot with them over the years in terms of making sure dual approvals are there for online banking, et cetera, et cetera. So, and there's also review of daily cash activities. So this item really relates to reconciling the cash and investments in the bank to the general ledger and making sure the general ledger is accurate. Again, when we reviewed the bank reconciliations, we didn't find any errors or issues. It was just more about the timeliness and making sure that the general ledger is updated timely going forward. Okay, and then on page 4 is Section 2, it goes over to page 5. And this was kind of what I alluded to at the beginning here. This is a follow-up from our initial plan for the audit, where we kind of walk through and we say, you know, there really wasn't anything significant in the audit that deviated from our plan. The township did implement a new accounting standard this year, which for the newer board members, you'll get used to me saying that because there's a new accounting standard almost every year, so unfortunately. But your team did a great job of taking that on and reviewing all of the details and working with us to make sure that that was implemented appropriately. One of the unfortunate things about all these new accounting standards is sometimes they don't really have a significant impact, but you still have to implement them and go through the process. So sometimes it's a lot of work for very minimal adjustments. But this will be one that will continue to be worked through in future years. But it really just related to the proper accounting and recording for promised compensated absence balances, like leave banks, those types of things, when an employee leaves the township or retires. And then on page 5, one item to note is we did have a few adjustments that were identified a little bit later in the process. And we worked with the township to basically pass on adjusting the records for those items. And what I mean by that is they were not material, they were not significant. The financial statements were very far down the road of being done. And they will still be accounted for in the records, they will be recorded in 2026. So some of these items, as opposed to having them be recorded in 2025. So it is common that when we find somewhat smaller items, that, you know, a decision has to be made at some point to kind of cut things off and move forward. And we did not feel that these would materially affect the financial statements or the reader's opinion on those. But we do have to note them. And then lastly, Section 3, which starts on page 6, really walks through some recommendations that we have. So these are not findings or anything, they're just best practices that we noted throughout the audit process. We spent some time talking to management about these items in detail. And then we also have some legislative-type items, which I know we talked to management as well on these items, and they're already working through, actually, a couple of these items to see if there's any benefit that the township can capture from some of these. So I hadn't planned to go into these in detail, but happy to cover them if somebody has a particular question or if you would like me to go into further detail on them. And if not, that was all I had planned to cover, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, no questions. I want to thank you and Ashley and your whole team there, and Hunter. I'd like to thank the accounting team, I'd like to thank Christine Carwin, our finance director, Pam Brachi, our consultant, we drafted her, Christina Falk, and Michelle Gerard, our whole accounting team. Of course, Audrey and Mary, who help guide them. Again, I want to thank the board again. Overall, we have a great working relationship, I want to thank you guys for working together. We've got a great budget in place, we keep moving forward in a positive way here. And again, and of course, all the department huts for working with me. So thank you all for our collaboration together.
Thank you. Thank you.
If nothing else, then I guess, thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a few months to start all over again. Is there any comments from the audience on anything non-agenda or agenda-related? If so, you have three minutes, state your name and address. Hearing none, it's Tom Matthews out there. He's out there somewhere, I know.
I guess the meeting's over.
Wait, the generator should kick on in a minute.
So we did pay our bills, right?
No, just to let you know, the meeting's over.
Thanks for coming.
Man, we finished just right. The good news is the generator's working.
Bad news is Washington...
Is the TV on or off? Oh, we're doing good?
Another power outage.
Thank you for keeping the TV on here, no, so.
And we replaced DTE with someone else.
It's assigned.
So it's assigned from God, we should end this now, so. Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Seconded by Clerk Brown. If no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good afternoon, night.
Thank you.
Thank you.